Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting and San Bruno Successor Agency Meeting of February 12, 2013. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Council Board Member Salazar.
Here.
Council Board Member Medina.
Here.
Council Board Member Ibera.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Connell. Vice Chair Mayor O'Connell. Mayor/Chair Ruane.
Here, I think. Here. Connie Jackson, you lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our third item is announcements, and although the agenda really doesn't have any announcements, I have three I'd like to make this evening. First of all, a very important announcement. Our city manager Connie Jackson was recently awarded the West McLure Award of Distinction, which is the, in essence, top city manager in the state of California. This was done just a little over a week ago, and I'd like to read just a little bit about it. It recognizes the values and principles deemed essential to city managers' professional conduct. The award recognizes a city manager's outstanding career service, leadership, ethics, expertise, and innovation in the field of city management as observed by their colleagues. The award is given to recognize those who make a difference to those who make a -- let me see. Those who make a difference to their profession. So Connie, congratulations.
Thank you.
Also, Portola Elementary School, 5th grade. There's a national group called Rocket 21. It's a youth social network where kids explore amazing possibilities for their lives and their futures. And Turner Endangered Species Fund, supporting endangered species conservation efforts. Delighted 5th graders at San Bruno's Portola Elementary School with a Dream Big in the Wild special event on Wednesday, February 5th. The 31 students and their teacher Kathleen Talbert were selected as grand prize winners in a national video competition designed to increase awareness of wildlife conservation and recovery, as well as to inspire interest in wildlife and environmental science careers. So I was happy to attend an event up there. It was a lot of fun, and these kids were nationally recognized. So congratulations to Portola 5th Grade Elementary. And one more. The City of San Bruno and the San Bruno Fire Department will be having their CERT Training Community Emergency Response Team. I won't get into all the dates. It starts February 27th all the way through the end of March and into, I think, April, and it's on the city's website. So it's important if you'd like to attend. It's a -- I hear it's a wonderful program for emergency preparedness. And let me see, we have a presentation this evening under item number four, and I'm going to present a proclamation recognizing Harold W. Brooks, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter, for his service to the residents of San Bruno. Harold is, in fact, in Washington, DC now, and I'd like to read this, because he was a great help to us, and the Red Cross continues to be a great help to us. The City Council, the City of San Bruno, State of California, whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in the Bay Area, as well as across the country and around the world, for more than 130 years. And whereas Harold W. Brooks has served as Chief Executive Officer of the American Red Cross for over 16 years, and whereas his professional accomplishments mentioned include making a lasting contribution to the community through innovative and award-winning preparedness programs like Prepare Bay Area and Ready Neighborhoods. And wherehas, he has positioned our local Red Cross as the leading chapter in the Red Cross Network with a talented team of staff and volunteers who responded to the San Bruno gas line explosion of 2010, plus other disasters in and around the Bay Area community and throughout the nation. And whereas during a long and productive career with the American Red Cross Bay Area, he will become the Senior Vice President for American Red Cross International Operations. Now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council and all of the citizens of San Bruno, do hereby officially recognize Harold W. Brooks and express our sincere appreciation for his service to our community. We wish him success in all his future endeavors and are grateful for the benefit of his contributions to our community. As I said, Harold's not with us this evening. He's probably watching the State of the Union in person, maybe. I don't know. But I know Madeline Markie, on behalf of the Red Cross, is going to accept it for Harold. I'll come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Mayor, City Manager Jackson, City Council Members and Community of San Bruno, we need to stop meeting this way. Just a month ago, I was here accepting the proclamation from Marion Wilson-Silvestri. As you mentioned, Harold was the CEO for the Red Cross for over 16 years, and he was the one they called. When any disaster happened in this country, Harold Brooks was deployed. He's probably seen more disaster sites than any of us in this room will ever see in our lifetime. He's been Hurricane Katrina. He was in New York for 9/11. He went to the Gulf Coast for every single hurricane they ever had. But when something happened in his backyard, in his community, he was always the first one on site, a lot of times beating most of the volunteer staff. On September 10th, Harold deployed to San Bruno within 60 minutes of the explosion, and from the moment he landed, he said, "Whatever resource we have as the American Red Cross, you make sure they are available to this community." And that was a theme that has carried on since that day. And before he left to head off to Washington, he said to me, "Madeline, you make sure that the city and community of San Bruno continue to have all of the resources that the Red Cross has available to help in their recovery and building their resiliency." So I thank you for this proclamation, and know that even though Harold is no longer with us, the Red Cross is here with you, and we will remain with you for as long as it takes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number five, review of the agenda. Comments on the agenda? Okay. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of October 10th and 15th, 2012, and a regular city council meeting of January 22nd, 2013, and special council meeting of February 5th, 2013. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none to be approved as submitted. Item number seven, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented early or council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion of second on the consent calendar, on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing, item A, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report for the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan. Adopt a resolution amending the general plan to ensure consistency with the Transit Corridors Plan. And adopt a resolution adopting the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan and provide direction regarding next steps. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Through the chair.
I am sorry. Please.
I thought you were going to do it for me, so I was waiting. Mr. Mayor has in the past with the transit corridor due to me my residents inside the transit corridor area. I'll have to recuse myself on this item.
Okay. And through the chair, for the same reason, I have been advised that I too must recuse myself.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is a great pleasure to be here tonight with a significant piece of work that has consumed a large amount of attention by staff and by the community over the past four years. We would have liked to have brought this item forward more expediently, but unfortunately it is one of the many items that experienced some delay with the tragic circumstances of the September 9th, 2010 explosion and fire. So we are doubly happily -- happy to be here tonight with culmination of this work effort and the exciting promise that this plan lays out for the community of San Bruno. We have a thorough and comprehensive staff report tonight, after which we would ask that you take public comment and then deliberate among yourselves prior to taking the actions that are proposed for your attention tonight. And I'll turn over to staff in just one moment, but I wanted to recognize the significant work effort and the attention and dedication in bringing this vision plan forward that's been devoted by the staff members to my right. Mark Sullivan and Laura Russell, in particular, have shepherded this project and have, in large measure, not only shepherded, but conceived the vision that it represents, and have nurtured the promise that this plan provides for the future revitalization and the continuing vitality of the critical central portion of our community. So with that, I would ask our new Director of Community Development, who I would have recognized, except that he's only been here a couple of weeks, and so he has the exciting opportunity to see this plan from this point forward into actual implementation. So with that, I'll ask David to make a few comments, and then he will turn over to staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is David Waltering. I'm the city's Community Development Director. It's really my pleasure to be here this evening to work with you and this community to bring forward this plan for consideration tonight. This particular plan is an area-wide revitalization plan referred to as the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan, or TCP. This plan is a specific plan, and a specific plan is defined in state planning law, and this is a type of plan that blends policy and regulatory requirements. The regulatory requirements might be things like height limits or land use stipulations. It's the same type of plan that was prepared and used to guide the successful development of the crossing mixed-use project here in town along the northwesterly side of El Camino Real. Work on this plan began in 2008 when the city's redevelopment agency approved preparation of a specific plan to guide the redevelopment of the city's downtown core along San Mateo Avenue and the streets directly adjacent to it, including El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, and Huntington Avenue. The overall project area is about 150 acres in size. Also, in 2008, the city council appointed a 17-member steering committee, which represented a broad range of community interest, to assist with the preparation of this plan. It was envisioned that this plan would be the catalyst to revitalize this important area of the community. One might ask, why was this plan necessary? And as one would look at the planning area, the 150 acres that I described, it was noted that there were some vacant buildings, some areas that were in disrepair, deferred maintenance, some land uses that weren't entirely compatible with the area, street improvements and landscape treatments that seemed out of date and could be upgraded. While the planning area offers some areas of concern, it also offers tremendous opportunity for the San Bruno community. It's an area that includes the downtown core. It's an area that has a wide range of transportation options, BART, Caltrain, a variety of bus lines and highways in the vicinity. Geographically, the area is close to San Francisco, the Silicon Valley, and wider San Francisco Bay Area. So while there are concerns, there's tremendous opportunity here. This community-based planning effort that's been going on for several years now included a wide range of research, public input, and review, and it did include the preparation of a full environmental impact report, or EIR. With the preparation of this EIR, there were some significant and unavoidable impacts identified. In fact, six areas of potentially significant and unavoidable impacts, and these areas had to do with traffic, with noise, and with historic buildings. Staff needs to point out that the state law, the California Environmental Quality Act, allows, though, that as communities look at potentially significant and unavoidable impacts, there's an opportunity to also look at the benefits of a plan, and if the community identifies that there are certain social or economic benefits of the plan that may outweigh those potentially significant impacts, the community can go ahead and approve the plan. And that's done with a statement of overriding considerations, and that's part of the plan and part of your consideration this evening. Staff has prepared an overall presentation for you this evening, and as our city manager, Connie Jackson, has indicated, our two planners that have worked substantially on this project, Mark Sullivan and Laura Russell, will be presenting the overall presentation this evening. Mark is going to start off by giving kind of an overview of the vision and how that vision was developed in terms of the community process, and then he'll pass off the presentation to Laura Russell, our associate planner. And Laura will talk about the measures, the implementation tools, the planning tools and measures that this community can use and are included in the document to actually realize this vision. And then Laura will pass the presentation back to Mark, and Mark will talk more about such things as the benefits of the plan, what it's going to take for implementation, the specific actions before the city council this evening, and then also next steps. Following the presentation, we'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have, and at this point, I'd like to turn things over to Mark.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. The Transit Corridors Plan builds on the vision and policies of the city's general The Transit Corridors Plan creates an exciting new vision for how the project area could develop over time and establishes a framework for revitalization and redevelopment of the commercial corridors around the new Caltrain station, including design guidelines as a roadmap to help achieve that vision. The plan area was chosen based on the existing commercial corridors and walking distance to the Caltrain station. The vision for the Transit Corridors Plan was created by the community during two community workshops. A 17-member steering committee then helped to develop the plan building on the vision framework, as well as input from community stakeholders. Outreach has included widely noticed public meetings and communications with residents. Notices were mailed to 2,500 residents for recent public meetings. These -- most recently, these have included a Planning Commission public hearing in April of 2012 to discuss the environmental impact report, a city council study session in October of last year, and the Planning Commission public hearing in November, where the Planning Commission recommended that the city council approve the plan. Open house meetings were held at City Hall in December and January. Additional outreach has included articles in the City Focus Newsletter, a project website that has received over 800 visits from -- and 540 unique visits from individuals, as well as community development staff communicating directly with residents at the counter, by phone, and in email on an ongoing basis. Three concerns stand out in our communications with residents in the plan area and surrounding the plan area, and I'm going to discuss those right up front. The first is the subject of eminent domain. People are concerned that there could be eminent domain associated with the plan, and that couldn't be further from the truth. The plan has no -- does not propose eminent domain of any existing residential properties, and in fact, we've included language that will be in the final version of the plan that explicitly states that. Residents were also concerned about what the plan might require them to do with their properties. Property owners within the project area will not be required to make any changes unless there is a proposal to redevelop the property. However, the plan does give property owners more options on how they can develop their properties by allowing mixed-use development, which is not currently allowed, and clear direction with design guidelines. And thirdly, residents were concerned about the impacts of taller buildings on adjacent single-family neighborhoods, single-family houses. The plan includes measures to minimize the impacts of new development on residential neighborhoods to the greatest extent possible. The plan will include a summary of those measures as an appendix, and it's also included in the resolution adopting the plan in your packet. And Laura will speak to this issue in her presentation a bit later. These -- several of these slides show current conditions in the area and then superimpose what the vision proposes for the area. So the community vision was the guiding force behind the development of the plan. The vision expresses the long-term desire, desired future for the Transit Corridors There are seven elements in the vision for the plan area, and the first is downtown as a day-and-night destination. The plan will promote downtown as a destination for workers and residents by encouraging new businesses such as restaurants, cafes, and shopping on the ground floor with housing on top. Local character and a distinctive identity. The area should have a distinct identity building on local character and history. Local history should be integrated into public art and streetscape. Welcoming gateways should greet visitors, and the plan should set a high standard for architectural quality. Convenient multimodal transportation network. Transportation improvements should make getting around the Transit Corridors area easy and convenient to encourage transit use and visiting San Bruno, linking pedestrians, bicycles, shuttles, buses, BART, Caltrain, as well as automobiles. Sustainable, excuse me, economic vitality. The Transit Corridors area should be development and business-friendly with a market-based approach to encourage growth, attract investor interests, and respond to local and regional market demands. The plan envisions new job opportunities and revenue opportunities for the city. Sustainable mixed-use development. The plan envisions a mix of commercial and residential buildings, allowing taller buildings up to four, five, and seven floors in specified areas to add vitality and foot traffic and to more fully realize the nearby transportation opportunities that the city offers. The plan envisions up to 1,610 new housing units, as well as office and retail uses. The plan allows flexibility to plan for changing needs and preferences, such as housing for young workers and an aging population. A safe and inviting pedestrian environment. The plan envisions attractive and coordinated street and landscape improvements that encourage walking by providing highly visible crosswalks, attractive design landscaping, and traffic A vibrant transit village. The station area should be developed as an attractive, vibrant transit village around the new Caltrain station, including a memorable gateway to the city of San Bruno, and the city should also promote economic ties to companies in the region to -- excuse me, to promote office uses in the station area. And that concludes the discussion of the vision. Now Laura will talk about the tools to implement the plan.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I will be talking about the tools that we have in the plan to reach the vision, and also a little bit about how the plan is sensitive to existing residential uses. So the Transit Corridors Plan is organized around five character areas that were created to address the unique strengths and also the opportunities in the different areas of the plan. So you can see here on the map, and the city council should have the color versions in front of them as well, that the yellow area is the Caltrain station area. This is envisioned as a high-intensity, transit-oriented development. We call that TOD in planner speak. It emphasizes office uses, since most of it is within the 70 decibel airport noise contour, where no new residential uses are allowed. The blue area is El Camino Real, which emphasizes residential and commercial at key intersections, and that aligns with the Grand Boulevard initiative. The green area is San Bruno Avenue and Huntington Avenue south of 380, where the plan envisions mixed uses and streetscape improvements. Orange is Huntington Avenue north of 380, that could include streetscape, bicycle, and pedestrian improvements over time. The pink area, of course, is the downtown area, where the community wanted to maintain the main street feel of that area with new commercial and residential opportunities. The plan proposes development standards that would create the maximum building envelope for new projects. A key component of that is height. The plan proposes an increase in height for several reasons. To provide enough residents in the community to encourage transit ridership and for shopping locally, for good urban design in terms of proportion, massing, and scale, and also to provide economic feasibility to redevelop some of the underutilized properties in the plan area. Under the current height limit of three stories, developers cannot include enough units or floor area to be cost-effective. This is what's been reported back to us by numerous developers over the years. The high cost of land on the peninsula, as well as the cost of underground parking, make a three-story development too expensive to work for them. So projects are more likely to pencil out if they're within the four-to-five-story range. So basically, you're familiar with some of this terminology, but that's like a three-to-four stories of wood-framed construction over a podium. I know you've heard those terms before and seen it in construction and some other places. So if this height limit is increased, older commercial properties will be more likely to redevelop and help achieve the revitalization goals of the plan. However, the height limits in the plan would require a citywide vote under Ordinance 1284. So you can see in this slide that height is proposed as a number of stories, as well as in feet. In most cases, the number of stories would be the more restrictive measure. The height and feet is included to allow developers some flexibility in the floor-to-ceiling heights, depending on the kinds of buildings they may propose. The tallest height is proposed in the station area, west of San Mateo Avenue and closest to the tracks. The proposed height at that location is seven stories. That's to maximize the transit-oriented development, the TOD potential of that location, and also to appeal to Class A office users. El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, and Huntington Avenue south of 380 are proposed at five stories. The lowest maximum height in the plan area is four stories, and that's in the downtown, again because the community vision was to maintain the main street feel of the downtown So the next tools are setback and step back. The plan proposes front setbacks to create space for pedestrians, landscaping, and outdoor dining where that would be appropriate. There is also a new requirement for rear setbacks when a project is adjacent to existing low-density residential. A new concept in the Transit Corridor Plan is a step back. You can see in this diagram that the upper floors are set in or stepped back further than the lower floors. This reduces the mass and bulk of new buildings. You can also see in this diagram that the trees soften the height a little bit of buildings in this mass and scale. Step backs would be required above the third or fourth floor, depending on the location. So the council is probably aware, but just as a brief reminder about what is floor area? What is the floor area ratio? So the floor area ratio, or FAR, is the ratio of building square footage to the size of the land. So you can see in this diagram, just to talk about floor area, that a 2.0 FAR can vary. If the building takes up a whole lot, it would be two stories, or it may be taller if it takes up less of the lot. So a majority of the existing sites in the plan area are less than 20,000 square feet, and for those parcels, the FAR limit is 2.0. So these pictures on the slide give examples of what a 2.0 FAR might look like. Of course, if buildings are constructed, they would still have to meet the setback and the step back requirements. For parcels -- For parcels greater than 20,000 square feet, the plan proposes a change, and that's to remove the FAR limit and regulate by height, setback, and step-back, basically the maximum building envelope. This would help direct larger development to the larger parcels in the community where it's more appropriate to do a large-scale development, and also afford more room for good site planning. There are currently about 25 sites in the plan area that are 20,000 square feet or larger. In other cases, developers would have to do land assembly in order to get that size and not have a floor-area ratio limit. So the maximum building envelope proposed by the plan could only take place on those 25 sites, or if other sites are assembled over time. So we would expect to see this an incremental change over many years. So when you look at this diagram of the maximum building envelope, it still looks boxy, right? This gives us an idea of what the maximum can be, but it doesn't really speak to the quality of the design that we'd like to see in the community. And so that's when we apply the design guidelines to improve the quality of the design. So each project would have to comply with the standards and the guidelines, and these tools working together bring us to quality projects and reduce the mass of buildings. So staff proposes to implement the Transit Corridor Plan guidelines the same way as we have the residential design guidelines, which has worked well. For each project, the Planning Commission, or Architectural Review Committee, would have to make a finding of fact that the project complies with the design guidelines in the Transit Corridor Plan. So I'd like to go over just a few of those guidelines with you. There are many within the plan. It's very important that applicants break up the building mass with varying planes. You can see the planes are set in more or less in this picture, as well as windows and architectural details. And also in this picture, you can see both horizontal and vertical elements. We can see here a good building articulation with a mix of materials, windows, balconies, and architectural details. The plan calls out key intersections such as the corner of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real, and at those locations, the architecture should anchor the corner. And so that can be done with strong entrance features, articulation, ground-floor transparencies, and strong materials at the base. So I'd like to move on now to the transportation policies within the plan, bringing the land uses, the design, and the transportation together. In a transit-oriented development area, it's important to implement the idea of complete streets, which you're familiar with from the policy you considered in December. Complete streets can be understood as an approach that considers all users of the street network. That's pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, people with disabilities, and transit users. The plan also encourages a park-once-and-walk strategy. This is especially in the downtown area, and this approach seeks to make the most of the existing parking supply. The plan proposes that the city consider a study to do a parking in Luffy, and that could potentially be used to fund a centrally-located and well-designed parking structure. Another proposed approach is shared parking, which allows businesses with different peak demand to share their parking spaces. It's important to note that the plan would still require off-site parking for new developments. There are some transit-oriented development plans that waive parking requirements completely, and this plan does not propose to do that. On-site parking would still be required, but the required amount is proposed to decrease compared to our current municipal code. So as an example, a one-bedroom apartment would require one space in the Transit Corridor Plan area instead of the current requirement of two spaces. So the question has been raised by the residents and by the Planning Commission, how is the plan sensitive to the existing residential areas? So the plan was developed to help projects transition into the existing city. But as we went through the community input process, we realized we still need to make some changes to the plan and bring more emphasis to this. So the first important point is that all new buildings will go through a public review process. For each project, staff would analyze the transition to adjacent low-density housing and make sure the applicant addresses things like building design, privacy impacts, and exterior lighting. The Planning Commission, or Architectural Review Committee, would have to make a finding of fact related to transitions. So this will bring attention to this issue and make applicants aware that this is an important community priority. I'd also like to emphasize two new development standards that came through the public review process. First, the plan proposes a 10-foot rear setback throughout the entire plan area when the project is adjacent to residential uses. This could actually be considered an improvement over the existing commercial zoning that has zero setback requirements. Second, again based on community comments, the step-back requirements next to residential were increased. So as proposed tonight, when a project is adjacent to low-density residential, a step-back of 15 feet is required above the third floor. So this increased step-back would help to mitigate concerns like light, shadow, and privacy concerns. And as I mentioned, on-site parking would still be required for all new projects. We have heard from the community that they are concerned about spillover parking into residential neighborhoods. To address this, the plan recommends expanding the residential permit parking program. So the city already has such a program that could be expanded to address those needs. Permits could be issued to residents, allowing for enforcement of non-residents. And this approach has been successful in many other communities, both around intensive land uses such as schools, as well as in transit-intensive areas like this. So staff does believe it would mitigate those concerns considerably. So now I'll turn it back over to Mark. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to first go into just a little bit of detail about the environmental impact report. A full environmental impact report was prepared to inform decision-makers and the public of potential environmental impacts. For each planned policy, the EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, determines whether there is a no impact, whether there is a less-than-significant impact, a less-than-significant impact when mitigated, or a significant and unavoidable impact. These impacts were discussed in detail at a City Council study session earlier last year, and also at the Planning Commission meeting in April. What's important here is the EIR identified six impacts that are considered significant and unavoidable. These impacts relate to three intersections and one roadway segment, also noise associated with traffic and a historical building impact. The traffic impacts involve delays ranging from about 12 seconds, 12 additional seconds at an intersection, to 1 minute and 40 seconds at the intersection of El Camino Real and San Bruno Avenue. The six unavoidable impacts are not unusual, given the scope and long-term timeframe of this plan. For example, the Redwood City Downtown Plan had well over, it was close to 30 significant unavoidable impacts. And it's also really important to remember that the EIR analyzed a worst-case scenario. It assumes full build-out of both the general plan and also of the Transit Corridors Plan. And it also assumes that there would be no change. It takes into account some change in commute habits, but they're relatively small. It doesn't address how people might commute 10 years from now or 15 years from now. So, in order to certify the EIR, the City Council must make findings that the benefits of the plan outweigh the unavoidable impacts identified in the EIR. The city's Planning Commission has reviewed this proposed project and found that the anticipated benefits outweigh the unavoidable impacts. The Planning Commission has recommended that the City Council approve a statement of overriding considerations, finding that the anticipated benefits outweigh, that is to say override, the significant and unavoidable impacts, and approve the project. The Transit Corridors Plan is expected to produce a number of benefits that do outweigh the impacts. I'm just going to go over a few of those. The first one is revitalization of the oldest parts of the city. The plan will remove barriers to private investment in the area by encouraging replacement of aging, underutilized, commercial land uses that no longer meet 21st-century needs with new mixed-use development. Community and economic benefits. The plan promotes the creation of new jobs and opportunities for residents to live and work in San Bruno. It will promote a range of rental and for-sale housing near transit, shopping, and public services. New development will contribute to the tax base of the city through property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. The plan will provide transportation improvements. The plan conforms with San Bruno's recently adopted complete streets policy and will make pedestrian comfort, safety, and convenience a priority. The Transit Corridors Area will be the transit hub of the city containing two train stations and connections to bus routes, making the area an appropriate location for more compact development. Regional planning and state law. The plan will also help the city to comply with regional and state laws related to regional housing needs and greenhouse gas reduction targets as provided in AB 32 and SB 375, as well as other regional planning efforts such as the Grand Boulevard Initiative. And I'm going to move on to implementation of the plan. Given the current uncertain economic climate with RDAs, RDA funds no longer available, and the continuing economic downturn, it is unlikely that significant changes will occur in the Transit Corridors Area in the near term. However, the city does look forward to a vision for a revitalized, modern downtown and transit corridors area being realized over time as new projects are proposed and approved in this important area of San Bruno. Full implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan requires two important future steps. First, it requires revisions to the city's zoning ordinance, and second, it would require a citywide vote to amend ordinance 1284. A comprehensive update to the city's zoning code is currently underway, which is separately required to implement the city's general plan. If the Transit Corridors Plan is approved, the code update will include the relevant elements of the Transit Corridors Plan. Just to keep you up to date, a study session is scheduled on February 20th on the zone code update, and staff anticipates that a public review draft of the zone code will be completed by this summer. The Transit Corridors Plan proposes allowing structures higher than three stories or 50 feet, some above-ground parking garages, and increased residential densities within the proposed project area. A voter initiative must be approved by a majority of the electorate in order to change these standards which were established by ordinance 1284. The items before the council tonight for your consideration are three resolutions. One involves certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and the statement of overriding considerations. The second one is a resolution amending the general plan, including changes to the land use map and text. And the third is approval of the Transit Corridors Plan itself with the revisions and corrections that are attached to the resolution. And in addition, staff seeks direction from the council regarding a citywide election to amend ordinance 1284. If the City Council approves the resolution, we would be asking for your guidance on how to proceed with ordinance 1284 to fully implement the Transit Corridors Plan. The initiative could be placed on a special election ballot in June or the general election ballot in November. The June special election would cost approximately $180,000. The June date would also have a short timeframe to prepare, and it could be difficult to meet. Placing the initiative on the next general election in November would cost approximately $15,000. The November election would also give staff more time to achieve making that the goal of getting it on the November ballot. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions of staff? Just for clarification, the amendment to 1284, that just in the transit corridor area?
Yes.
Or does that apply to, say, Bay Hill?
No, it just applies inside the boundary of the Transit Corridors Area.
Okay, all right. Any questions of staff at this time? Ken?
Along those lines of 1284, I mean, was there a discussion about repealing 1284? Or amending it to affect other areas such as Bay Hill or other commercial areas other than the Transit Corridor? Or are we strictly going to put on the ballot something that you're voting to amend 1284 or exclude 1284 as it resides within the Transit Corridor Plan?
Yes, the latter. The discussion during the development of the Transit Corridors Plan was to amend ordinance 1284 just with respect to the property inside the Transit Corridors Area.
So is it staff's belief that, or staff's feeling that 1284 is still valid, you know, throughout the rest of the community?
Yes.
Anything else, Irene? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. Would any members of the public like to address the council on this item? Come to the podium and tell us your name and your street.
My name is Russell Steins, and I live at 851 Reed in San Bruno. And a couple things. One is, first of all, 1284, if you're going to amend it for just the corridor, then I think that that's not fair to the people, that this is, you know, the residents, that this is, happens to this impact for this, this. I think if you're going to do, you can't, I think that you should put 1284 and then let everybody vote on it, that anybody's, any, you know, you're looking at putting a seven-story, five-story building five doors down from my house if it was built there. So I'd like to know if anybody did anything about, you know, checking the impact on the price of homes, what would happen to the existing homes in that area? And, you know, we, I think that we need to, like, redo what we have and not build buildings. It says here that you want to put a mixed housing, commercial corridor in front of my house. I don't think that that's right. I don't see that being a benefit to anybody that lives on any of those streets there on that side of El Camino. When they built Redwood City up, they built it in the heart of Redwood City, where the existing commercial buildings were. And I just think that if you're going to put a ballot measure on there for 1284, and it's only going to be concerning the people that this is going to affect at this time, that I think it should affect all of San Bruno. If you're going to change, you can't just change, that ordinance was put there for a reason. And that reason was to keep residential properties residential and commercial properties commercial. And you guys are all of a sudden, because you want to develop these areas, you're going to, you know, you're going to impact the housing, the housing, well, my house for sure. I don't know about anybody else's, but my house for sure you're going to impact. So I'd like to know if you guys have done a study on what happens to the houses that are behind this 70-foot-tall building that you want to put in front of my house? Has anybody done that?
Okay, we'll get an answer for you.
Okay, number one. Number two, I'd also like to know if anybody on the City Council lives in any of these areas. Does anybody that voted for this live anywhere on the City Council, live anywhere in this area?
First of all, nobody's voted on it yet.
Oh, okay. Anybody that's talking about amending this? Anybody that's talking about amending this or doing this, Mark, do you live in this area here?
We have, we have a couple of council members that have recused themselves because they own property.
Exactly. And you know what their answer would be to this. So that's why they've had to excuse themselves, and you won't let them vote, and you won't let them vote, so, I mean...
I don't want to get it back and forth, but Irene has a comment. Irene?
They're recusing themselves, not because they want to, but they have to.
Because they have to, I understand.
Well, and because I also own property in that area, but I was able to stay here and vote because you have to have at least three people to vote on anything like this, so...
Okay, well, can we, can then, can the rest of us choose who we want to be up there to vote instead of you?
No. The short answer is no.
Why not?
It was, I was chosen a year ago, I believe.
By who?
It was a straw, it was a straw vote. It was a straw, my name was pulled out of a hat. So just so, the reason I'm saying something is because you, so that you know that I have some personal feeling for that area.
Do you live there?
No, but I grew up on Fifth Avenue.
I know, I knew where you grew up, and I know that, you know, we went through this whole thing with the sewer issue, and I knew that you guys had your mind made up before I came up here, and we went through this whole thing last time I came here. So I just want to know, do you guys have your mind made up on this right now?
Because... Let's, if we had our mind made up, there wouldn't be any public hearing or anything. This is a process that involves the whole city.
Okay.
Let me explain something.
Okay.
All right? And your time is up, but being that this is very important, all right? We had four years of discussion on this, public hearings down in San Mateo Avenue, a number of them attended by not only the 17 members of the community that were on this committee, but a lot of residents also. So it's no secret as to what's going on. It's no secret of the input that everybody put into this, and this is the outcome of all of that. Very, very well thought out, and very well thought out of our consultants. I'm going to get an answer for you, if we have an answer for you regarding the price of homes or the effect of those types of things. But this is, this is nothing that is predetermined. This was done after four, over four years of thought, a very well thought out process. So I want you to know that, and I want everybody to know that. You know, we don't take this stuff lightly.
No, I understand. I understand. You know, I just...
No, I understand.
I wish you lived on Reed, is all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Yes? Just tell us your name and your street. Thank you.
Thomas Wells, 871 Eastern Avenue. I just want to address the building mass and possible language that could be in the code to determine what the massing would be. I mean, a lot of the pictures that were shown of the stepbacks which occur over, say, three stories in height, still gave the buildings a huge presence on the street in what I would call a brick. You know, it's just a big, flat plane. And I would encourage the staff to introduce some language in there that gave the opportunity, gave the ability to the developer to vary the planes of the building by, say, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but if they stepped, if they stepped back their building below the required height, that they would give the opportunity to project the building at an upper height, and therefore give some ability to the designer to have, say, a tall object next to a step-backed object and have the ability to really play with the facade. Because if you, if a developer has a series of parcels strung together over the, over about 150 feet, what you're going to get is 150-foot-long brick of a facade. And also, I would encourage some language that gave the impression, enabled the designer to make it look like there are separate buildings of reasonable size, separate parcels. Let's say they still had that 150-foot-long building, but they were encouraged to give a separate identity to different segments, say, 50-foot segment, a 50-foot segment, 50-foot segment, to reduce the scale to a more human scale, to make it feel like there are separate parcels that may be connected on the interior, but they have a different character on the outside. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me just say that it should be noted, and I want to emphasize that anything that happens there over the next number of years has to go through the planning process, so architectural review, citizen participation, so it's not that the examples they put on the screen were just, in fact, examples of types of things that could possibly happen, but they were just superimposed, and they're not by any way, shape, or form done already or decided upon. So it has to go through a process, a very intense process for the city, especially going forward.
And if I could add, Mr. Mayor, as a design professional in this community, a lot has changed in the last 20 years, 25 years. And believe me, I'm, I like to call myself a good designer, but I'm constantly challenged even today. And we've, you know, and it's, so it's a give and take, and it's a having to answer to a client to say, no, we can't do that anymore, and just because it's happening down the street, we, you know, designs have changed to respect even more adjacent residences and communities. So I think it's, the design guidelines are good, for the most part, for residential, and they're even stricter now for what they're proposing for the transit corridors.
Anyone else? Mr. Peterson?
Barry Peterson, Senior Court. I'm also on the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking here as an individual. Although the reason I'm here is because I was at the Planning Commission meeting when it was voted to recommend approval of the Transit Corridor Plan. And Barry, in your packet tonight, you have 190 pages, no, 238 pages. 190 pages of it, and that's not even counting the plan, 190 pages of it is the Planning Department presentation to you. Buried on page 172 are a few things that were said in the Planning Commission meeting. And in particular, the thing that concerns me, the reason I came tonight, was at the meeting when it was voted to forward the resolution to you with a recommendation, part of that vote was to include two comments. One, that as part of the plan, there should be a section called the Resident Protection Program, which would gather together all the elements of the plan that were designed to recognize the concern of residents that are living in the avenues areas in particular. And secondly, the second recommendation of the commission to the council was to recognize that the format of the Transit Corridors Plan was going to be used by developers and the public and the council for many years to guide this process, and the recommendation is that the format be improved. Some of the defects in the format were a small type size, a faint color of type size, photographs that had no relationship to the adjacent text, and similar. So I'm bringing this to your attention and asking that you consider it in your approval of any steps to go forward, that the format of this document, well, I should say something else. I said it, other commissioners said it, this is a good document. It's important, it's necessary, it's well-conceived, and will be a good guide. But in order to carry out that role, it has to be more readable. The type has to be easy to read. If there are pictures, there should be a reason for them, and the diagrams are pathetically small type. They're almost illegible. So it sounds like a plea, and it is. We talked tonight about Ordinance 1284. This document, which the commission was given, and which I believe at this time is the only document you have, did not even address Ordinance 1284. Staff recognized that. One of my comments on the review of this document was there was no reference to 1284. I think my read of the city, having lived here since 1976 and been on the Planning Commission for many years, the residents of the city are interested in having this plan go forward, but they're still interested in Ordinance 1284. And I would recommend that the council take steps with staff to better explain in more human terms what the, what the Transit Corridor Plan will do for the city and for the residents. And partly because of that, I think it's very valuable to have that document entitled the Resident Protection Plan, which will explain to the residents and to any voters for that matter, what steps the city will undertake, such as design reviews, as mentioned by staff, to make sure that the residents adjacent to, as a good example, San Bruno Avenue from 101 up to El Camino, what the city will do to make sure the residents aren't totally trampled by the effects of increased development. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Just a couple of quick things. I served on the Transit Corridor Plan Committee for probably three or four of the years. As David, as Mark, and Laura have told you tonight, there are many safeguards in there. There are many steps that need to be taken before any specific piece of property can change and begin to comply with any of the proposed desires or suggestions in the plan. The pictures, the architectural renderings or whatever are just examples of what could be, happen at a particular location. I would ask affirmative vote, a majority of all three of you on the three resolutions to let this move forward, let the public then, as the Planning Commission, as the architectural review, and as the city council, has the opportunities going forward to vote on specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Tell us your name and your street, please.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Serena Ebb. I'm actually not a resident of San Bruno, but I work at a local nonprofit organization called the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We've been here several times. We've been following this plan for the past few years, and I'm here tonight to also urge you to approve this plan and adopt the resolutions that are necessary to accept the final EIR and to amend the general plan. We support this plan because it includes housing policies that are consistent with the type of housing that we do need in our community here. Diverse housing types, housing near transportation, and in close proximity to jobs, retail stores, restaurants, and banks in the downtown area. I grew up in this area, and to be honest, I grew up in Pacifica, and I can't wait to move out of Pacifica because it has nothing going on. And when my dad said, where do you want to live? I said, well, right now, I'd like to live in San Mateo. But if San Bruno can get this plan going, that I happen to just know about because of my work, that's somewhere where I would like to live, where there's a lot of people out and about, somewhere I could show my college friends who visit a place that I can just walk out and go to and have fun in, and not have to go to the city all the time. So I'm excited about this plan personally, and also as an organization. We've been here, I think you've already heard from us several times throughout the last few years. We really appreciate your, your community process of getting everyone involved. We know that you've invited us to several, or you've notified the community of several meetings that you've had in the past few years, so we're excited to see this plan move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
Paula Bradley, I live on Second Avenue. I've brought up this issue at other public meetings, but I wanted to ask a question about the portion of San Bruno Avenue between First and Seventh Avenue. It says mixed use, but we're in the high-decibel, no additional residential, so what mixed use is it going to be? Yeah, I don't understand why we need five stories if it's not going to be, you know, businesses with residential above, and I don't think you can put any more residences there, so that's my question.
Okay. I'll get an answer for you. All right. Anything else?
I, well, as I said at the previous meeting, I think it should stay at three stories for that portion of San Bruno Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Paul Ram. I'm a property owner on Eastern Avenue. I just had a question about the permitted parking. How would that work in the residential streets? And my other question was about how the city, like, the pictures, the renditions look beautiful, but without eminent domain, how can the city help property owners, or how will the new money come in to develop some of these projects?
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, to staff, a question here about, were any studies done, or a portion of the studies that were done, address property values in and around the new development at all?
The Environmental Impact Report analyzes environmental impacts...
A little closer.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. The Environmental Impact Report analyzes environmental impacts. So it did take a look at how, you know, new buildings and the development proposed in the Transit Corridors area would affect properties at a physical level, but it didn't, didn't look at the financial impacts. And so, no, there were no, there's not an analysis of, you know, the effect on the economics of surrounding properties.
Okay, all right. I think it was, Connie?
If I could just add, as you heard in the staff's presentation, there is a required project-by-project review and analysis that will occur with any implementation of the plan, that will take into consideration very specifically any and all impacts that may relate to the surrounding neighborhood. It is not typical that we do an economic evaluation of financial impacts to the property, but by careful evaluation of the physical impacts, it is expected that, to the maximum extent possible, those are taken into consideration and that they are evaluated as part of what creates a successful project.
All right, thank you. I believe it was Paula that asked about mixed use from First to Seventh up towards El Camino. Could you expand a little bit on that?
Yeah, she's right, that new residential is not allowed in that area. So the plan proposes mixed use, which is essentially commercial mixed use, which would allow, say, office on top. So that would basically be the, the option would be retail and office, and that would be the type of mixed use. And obviously, that would be more significant in the, in the station area where you can, you know, you have a larger development site and you can do a more significant project. But that's, that's what the plan proposes, is mixed commercial uses along the eastern portion of San Bruno Avenue.
Does that apply to the Reed area, too?
Which area?
The Reed Area.
That's within the...
If I understand your question, in the Reed Area around your home? No, that rule does not apply. She's talking about on San Bruno Avenue in the airport noise contour.
Okay. And lastly, I think it was Paul asked about, could you expand a little bit on the permit parking situation with proposed?
So the details would have to be developed of how the program could be expanded. But there is an existing program within the community where residents are given permits that they put into their cars. And there's also provisions for guests, for people who are visiting people who live in the area. And then those permits are displayed within your vehicle. And then that gives the police department an opportunity to do enforcement of those people that are not permitted to park there.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. We're in the public. And if we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from discussing this matter with us again. So I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance. Any action? We're on cable TV, so if you're going to speak to us...
I thought you said I could.
Yeah, but you really need to speak at the podium. And, you know, if you can make it quick, I'll give you another...
I'll do it really quick.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like you guys to think about the financial impact of the San Bruno residents. And I can't imagine that nobody actually knows the answer to that question after four years about property value, what happens to all the people in San Bruno that have homes there. It just baffles me.
Thank you. We had one more speaker. Just tell us your name and your street.
My name is Catherine Dubon.
Pull that microphone a little bit closer to you.
My name is Catherine Dubon and I live in Seventh Avenue. And I just wanted to remind you how we purchased homes for our families in San Bruno because it was a town and where the parks are and the schools are and our kids, you know, can, you know, ride their bikes and be safe without too much outside people coming in that don't live in the city of San Bruno. There's a lot of people that have actually struggled a lot to stay in San Bruno with all the economy that has gone up and down and people have lost their homes. But the ones who are still here are the ones that, you know, really worked hard towards, you know, keeping their home and being able to live in the town that they fell in love with 15 years ago. Like myself, all my children were born in my home. So bringing in businesses and offices and all this into the street of San Bruno Avenue, I would be right behind that because I'm the first house behind all this construction that's going to be happening. And I know that there's several other homes all through the side, all the way to the railroad tracks that are also going to be affected the same as myself here. But I just don't think it's the right thing. Like the other cities that I've heard before in other hearings that have done these kind of remodeling and modernization, it has been in commercial areas. I've heard like Milbury Avenue, Third Avenue. All those are far from residences. They're all stores and, you know, commercial. But being that there's homes so close to where you're going or you plan to do all these constructions, I think it's not appropriate. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Sunil and I live on Euclid Avenue. And my question is that I'm very much excited with the Transit Corridor Plan and the areas other than the TCP, will the zoning change? And if the zoning changes for our property, what impact it will have on us? And if it doesn't suit us, then how much timeframe will be given so that we decide what we have to do?
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Rob Hegy, 100 Portola Way. I'm not going to be affected directly by this, but, you know, my question is to, if you're going to put this, you know, to revise Ordinance 1284, you know, I mean, is it just going to be very specific, you know, to that area? And then, and I'm really not inclined to, you know, put these monstrous structures near, you know, because then I think you're going to start putting things near my house, okay? And I really don't want you to, you know, start doing that because I just feel that this goes on and on. And my other question is, when you say this is a mixed housing thing, I mean, are these like private condos being sold, rental units? And are they going to be full pay rental? I mean, or is the government, you know, because I don't also want, because I was born and raised in San Francisco and I don't want federal housing projects in San Bruno either. So that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? We'll get some answers. First of all, comments have been made about the city bringing things in. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to make things, as we've tried over the last number of years, but the economy has forced us in another direction. We're trying to make it attractive for people to come here. You know, a lot of people said to us in some of the area, for instance, over by the crossing there, "Why can't you bring in so-and-so? Why can't you bring in so-and-so?" Well, we've had a number of opportunities to bring in a typical kind of restaurant, let's just say, over there. But we, as San Bruno, didn't fit into the cookie cutter mold of a lot of them. Financially, it wasn't feasible for people to come into the city because of this economy. And now things seem to be turning around a little bit and we're getting a lot of interest. A perfect example is five very good hotel developers that want to develop the last site over by 380 Hotel for the City, which we really don't have a full-service hotel. And so it's becoming more attractive for people to invest in our town. And I think that's good. But, you know, the one thing I can't emphasize enough is that we're not proposing to build five, six, seven stories here or there. We have no plan in place to do that. But if, in fact, it can be compatible with the area after this train station is done and it works with your input, then I think it's a good thing. But the key is your input. That's what it's all about. That's why we went to the public process of four years and more to get the input of 17 business people and local residents and had numbers of public hearings on all of this. So I also want to say that, you know, that discussion has been brought up about eminent domain and taking our properties and things. A number of years ago, when we didn't have redevelopment and we were really hurting because it was available to us, but people were worried about us taking your property, we finally voted in redevelopment. And part of that was with myself and former Mayor Simon, is we started residential conservation areas in the city to preclude us from taking anything by eminent domain. This Transit Corridors Plan has the same type of protection there too. We have no intentions of taking properties. I understand some of the properties along San Mateo Avenue are close to the street. And if, in fact, we make it attractive for people to come in, we'll be very sensitive to the fact that those residents are there and some are close by. That's why we talked about setbacks and step backs so that you don't have a mass like you have not too far away down in El Camino Real, right down near us, where it's right on the sidewalk and the thing is five or six stories tall. That's not our intent. But the key here is your input. That's my two cents here. And then I just want to emphasize, the question was brought up about 1284 and it only applied to the Transit Corridors Area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, all right. Let me see. And the zoning change. Someone brought up about the zoning change. How does it affect...
The surrounding area? There would be no changes to the surrounding area in the zoning. We'd only be inside the Transit Corridors Area.
Okay, fine.
And if I may just go back to an earlier question that Russell Stein, I think, had about the, he was concerned about the economic impact on his home and homes in the surrounding area. And although, you know, we haven't done a specific economic impact analysis on properties, anecdotal evidence and experience in other communities and which we've reviewed in, you know, articles and so forth that have been written about this type of development, Transit Corridors Plans, which have occurred in a lot of places, including, you know, in neighboring cities, that they have been a benefit to the community, not just to the project that's built there. But, you know, when you have more and better businesses, you have better access to transit. You have, you know, more pleasant sidewalks. You have a better streetscape. You know, logically, that sort of makes a better environment for people to live in, not only inside the area, but it benefits the surrounding areas as well.
Okay. And also to Catherine, I believe, on Seventh Avenue, it's our intention to improve the city, not to put a big shadow on your properties. We want to make it more livable for everybody going forward. You can see what they've done in other cities. A perfect example is decrepit old ballpark and piers down in San Francisco. And you go down there now and it's vibrant. It's alive, it's young, and it's an entirely different city. And a lot of that was tied together by Museum of Modern Art and a new stadium. We have a great separation here and we have a potential to take that old theater down and do something decent with it. And that'll tie that whole, part of this Transit Corridors Plan together, that street. So the opportunities are great. I look forward to working with all of you on this going forward. And we are very, very sensitive and have been throughout this whole process. So if there's no more discussion, last for a motion to... Well, why don't we close the public hearing first? Would you like to move on?
I'll move to...
If I could ask a question first, it might spur on more input. The Planning Commission, if you could elaborate more on what Mr. Peterson said as far as the Planning Commission's discussion and what revisions they added and comments they added to their approval of the plan? Because he did mention this, I'm curious to see how the Planning Commission reacted to the Resident Protection Plan.
So Commissioner Peterson described his vision of a Resident Protection Plan. So staff went back and pulled out elements of the plan that addressed that concern. How would we address existing residents? And so that's included in your packet. And we've re-titled it the Mixed Use to Residential Transition Measures. And staff actually proposes that that be integrated into the plan. So we propose that that be a new Appendix A that would go with the plan permanently. So the community and applicants would be aware that this is a concern and a significant, I think, to be addressed through every project. And so that handout includes things like the public review process, the fact that every project would have a public meeting, the new finding of fact that I discussed in my presentation talking about analysis of the transition from new projects to residential. That would provide an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on that as well. So staff would do the initial analysis. The Planning Commission or Architectural Review Committee would take feedback on those measures. And projects would not be able to be approved unless the Planning Commission or Architectural Review Committee could make that legal finding that the transition had been considered. This handout, the Transition Measures, also discusses building design. So that's the development standards of the setbacks and the step backs. We've included the design guidelines that are specifically related to the transition. We've discussed the approved land uses. So some of the changes in the land uses that could occur that could be considered beneficial to residential neighborhoods, as well as the parking and transportation, the things that could be considered positives, as well as the residential permit program that could mitigate any concerns. So we would propose that that be included in the plan and go forward as a clear statement that the residential neighborhoods are to be respected with the plan.
If I could follow up on that. I don't want to give the public any false sense of security here because, again, I'm a design professional and we, you know, the bottom line is to maximize the investment, maximize the development in relation to the cost of the land and, you know, square footage and things. And what if a developer came in and an El Camino property with a residential zoning adjacent or a San Bruno Avenue property with a residential neighborhood adjacent? What if they complied with the setback? What if they complied with the step back? And they had articulation and they did, like the other gentleman said, and they made it look like it was separate buildings and stuff? It could still be very overpowering for the residents. I mean, because they're in their little one-story, you know, in many cases, two-bedroom, one-bath, you know, 20-foot-tall, you know, house, you know, and, you know, and here you have this development right next to it. So I don't, I mean, I know the attributes and, you know, the great things that, you know, that this can do for a community. But this gentleman, that, you know, all these people are in fear, just like they did for those previous 10 years that eminent domain was, you know, was lurking. They were in fear of a developer and getting that public notice that says something's going to happen, you know, next door or across the street. And then all of a sudden, they have to, you know, bound together and, you know, and it's almost like they have to get ready to fight because they don't feel secure with, you know, with the process. And I think we have to give them those assurances, you know. And I think this is, you know, maybe this is good enough, but, you know, maybe it's, you know, not good enough for, you know, for those residents that are actually adjacent to, you know, the zoning.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion or action by the council?
I have a few questions.
Irene?
One of my concerns is that a developer will come in and buy a lot or buy a business and it'll sit empty until the next business, you know, the next lot comes along and then the next lot. And pretty soon, it's five years or 10 years and you've got three empty lots or an empty lot in a business, you know. And we've lived through empty lots with nothing on them. We still have, we have businesses that have been fenced off and sitting there for 15 years, however long it is. The bank, the former bank site on San Bruno Avenue in Huntington there is a prime example. Those are horrible things to live next to. What are we going to do to assure people that something will be done, that the properties will be kept up until the developer actually does the development? Do we have restrictions on what can be done, what can't be done, what would be kept up? All those kinds of things.
I have two thoughts on that. One is that the plan was written to be a market-based plan so that it would incentivize developers to develop projects. So the sort of, the profit incentive is, I think, the carrot that pushes this forward and hopefully prevents that type of, you know, delaying buying a parcel and, you know, you're waiting for that next one to get your complete development site. So I think that's one thing is there's an economic incentive to move forward. People don't, generally, a, you know, a savvy developer does not buy a property and sit on it, although, you know, we've had some different experiences here. But the other thing too, I think, and I, you know... But the other thing too, I think, and, you know, maybe Laura can speak more to this, is that we are in the process of updating our zoning code. And, you know, there could be, that could be something that we could look into in terms of, you know, we do, we do have in our code enforcement process, we have, we have rules about what you should or shouldn't do with your, with your vacant property. We could potentially strengthen those. And as I say, we could think about doing something in the, in the zoning code.
It, I appreciate the difficulty of what I'm asking, but is there anything that we can do in this plan to make it clear to developers that we don't want an empty building, we don't want a, a lot that sits around and gets trashed? Can we? I, I have no idea. But we've all experienced those lots on San Bruno Avenue. They've been empty and ugly and dirty and everything undesirable you can think of for years now, and nothing much has been done about it. I realize that if we change this and we get the plan in place, and that might incentivize people, but still, that's not an surety. Is there something we can do that would assure, at least in a more positive way, assure that something gets done? Or can we, if you can't answer me, can we look at, look into it and come back? Okay, let's do that.
Yeah.
I, I have some more if you want to.
Go ahead.
Okay. You talked about the parking requirement changing from, from a one-bedroom, it used to be two, and you're proposing that it be one parking garage, I mean, parking space for a one-bedroom. And I'm sorry, I don't remember what we did or if we changed the proposal to change parking requirements for businesses and offices. Is it still the same per square X amount of parking per square footage? Are we changing it? Or should we look at changing it closer yard to transit? Would that be an incentive if you're, you know, you need less parking if you're right next door to the train station or those kinds of things?
So the Transit Corridors Plan does outline some kind of broad brush statements in regards to parking, and it does recommend a reduction in parking in pretty much all land uses. So for example, retail parking in downtown right now is four spaces per 1,000, and the Transit Corridor Plan would recommend three spaces per 1,000. Office space immediately adjacent to the train station would be quite a bit less than our standard code requirement today. The exact details of that, of exactly how we would implement those parking standards, would come back to the city council for consideration as part of the comprehensive zoning code update.
Okay. Okay. Let me read my notes and I'll come back.
Ken, you have anything?
I have a lot.
Well, go for it.
Well, it's, I don't have any questions or anything, and, I mean, the gentleman, you know, Mr. Steins, I mean, I feel for you because, but yes, I've, I've made up my mind on this. I've made up my mind four years ago, I made, made up my mind 17 years ago when I was elected to this, to sit on this dais. And ironically, I'm sitting with two of my colleagues now for the last 17 years, and I think we've got a track record of making good decisions and improving this community. Yeah, we were faced with wanting to make changes, but we didn't have any tools to do it with. We didn't have redevelopment. And if we don't, if we never got redevelopment, you wouldn't see anything along El Camino. You'd see a bunch of, probably right now, you'd see a vacant, a bunch of vacant auto, auto dealerships, and you would probably not, you'd probably see a, a ghost town where Tan Fran is if we didn't have redevelopment. And you definitely wouldn't see the crossing. We are geared towards satisfying our residents, but this is, it has to be a new attitude. The thing is that we, you know, we, we're living in a bedroom community that was developed 50 years ago, 50, 60 years ago. That's not happening anymore. And it's not going to go away. It's just that now we need to run a, run a city that, you know, that's not working, you know, in the commercial areas now. We've, you know, we came onto this council and we're faced with, what are you going to do about the downtown? What are you going to do about El Camino? Every time a business closes, you know, what are we going to do? When are we going to get, I mean, I remember 17 years ago, why can't you get Starbucks? You know, and the, the answer was, well, why would Starbucks want to come here? So we face, you know, we faced a lot of challenges 17 years ago. And I, and I believe now we have six Starbucks. We have a, a, a beautiful regional shopping center. We have thousands of high-end rental units at the crossings. We have, you know, we have a nice restaurant that you can't get into now. And we need to look forward. I mean, 17 years, and, and now we need to try and get our residents who are the bread and butter of our community to buy into this. And that's why I say, I mean, I'm not going to ignore a resident who fears that he's going to have seven, staring at seven stories, you know, in a couple of years or something. And that's why I'm concerned that we do implement some major, you know, guidelines, you know, in that zoning code so that, you know, so the residents don't, you know, they, they can be confident that, that we're going to protect them and that, you know, that, that the developers know that they're not going to be able to, you know, get something in edgewise or something. So that's, that's something that residents always distrust, is it's nice to show nice renderings, it's nice to Photoshop a lot of nice things with, you know, with 100-year-old trees and things, but that's not what it actually looks like, you know, when it's all said and done. It may take time. And I believe they need the, the, the security, they need the trust, and they need to know that we're, we are truly looking at their best interests, and it's not just a bunch of, you know, words, words in a document. But again, everything that I've been involved in, in this community, and that I have fought for, whether it's, you know, whether it's development along El Camino, whether it's a railroad track, great separation, has been in the interest of improving this community and sensitive to everyone around it. And I believe it's, it's been, it's worked. Like I said, we've come a long way. I, I mean, there's people like, you know, George Fiscardo and Aaron Aitken and, you know, all the staff that have worked so hard. And we've always been, we've been on the same page, and we've had meetings with many residents and input, and, you know, and we just weren't just going through the motions to, you know, to, to, to implement something. We were truly, you know, going through it with the interest of, you know, with everyone's interest in mind. So I hope, I hope there are residents that, you know, are, you know, can learn to buy into this, even if it's not something that you really, you know, can foresee right now. Because we want you to be proud. 17 years ago, there was not a lot of pride in this community as far as the commercial aspect of it, as far as coming into San Bruno. We were all just in our own homes, and we were pride of ownership in our homes. But, you know, the town, you know, was, you know, was faced with a lot of challenges. So this plan is, is the rest of our lives. And I believe it's going to be the right, the right thing to do in the long term and even in the short term, because it gives us the tools. Because everything, everything that's laid out right now, you can get three stories right across the street from you in a big block building, you know, and we really wouldn't have anything we could do about it. You know, now, we're giving, we're empowering everyone, you know, and, and also trying to make it look good, so.
Irene?
Thank you. I just want to echo what you said, Ken, and it has been a long haul, and we can't please everyone, but we really, truly make the effort to make the city as a whole as best as we can. I, I would, I, I guess the question is, if we approve the resolutions that we have in front of us, does that preclude us from making any changes in any substantive way? Because I would, I would like to see us strengthened somehow or another, leaving empty lots or, you know, trash around or anything that detracts from what people are trying to do. So that's a, I guess that's a procedural question.
This, this is a living document, isn't it? This is something we can be changing, you know, I don't want to say left and right, but, you know, we can be, you know, we can constantly be hopefully improving it.
If, if I may, through the chair, I think the, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, probably the, the next way to do that would be through amendments to the zoning code, which I think he indicated would be coming back to you for review. So we can certainly take a look at those and find ways to strengthen our existing ordinances that we have, recognizing that we can't make people develop their property, but we can adopt ordinances that requires them to take care of it. And we have ordinances that do that now, but we'll certainly look at strengthening them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, we have three resolutions. What's your, what's your pleasure?
I'll introduce the first resolution. Do you want me to?
First resolution is adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report for the San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And I'll introduce the second resolution, which is...
Adopt a resolution amending the general plan to ensure consistency with the Transit Corridors Plan.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
You want to do the last one?
You want it to try, try back? I'll, I'll take the big one. The resolution, I'll introduce a resolution, adoption of the Transit Corridors Plan.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And regarding the next steps, I think it's pushing it to try to get this on a summer ballot. I think we want to get this on the November ballot. That's my feeling.
Yes.
Irene? Yes?
If, if I could, before everyone clears out, I mean, a few people got up there and residents and, you know, had their hearts into being against this and, and possibly being concerned, and that's obviously a very small minority. And I, I think I can speak for, for us and for our colleagues sitting out in the, in the hall. One person makes a big difference, too. And I'm looking right at you, sir, and I'm going to, I mean, and you can, you can be, you know, you can be on me, you know, for the rest of this year, you know, making, making sure that, you know, that I'm looking out for you and everyone down the street from you and everyone that's adjacent, because that is something that, you know, we have to be taking account and we have to be accountable for. So that's all I can offer to you, and I, you know, and we'll, we'll take those seriously into consideration.
Will somebody do it, will somebody do a financial impact to homes? Or no? That's just going to be a non.
We'll take that into consideration.
We'll get some studies, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not done with this by any means. This is a living document. Right. Okay, so staff, you have the direction you need?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll just take a five-minute break and let our councilmembers come back in and let, let you clear out if you so desire. Like to call a city council meeting back to order, please? Uh, next item is also public hearing. Item B, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the request for citizens' option for public safety funds for fiscal year 2012-13 in the amount of $100,000. Chief?
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, in 1996, Assembly Bill 3229 implemented the citizens' option for public safety or COPS program. The program appropriated state funds to supplement local law enforcement for enhancing frontline police services. The amount of the, this year's COPS funding for San Bruno was $100,000. Part of the requirements for COPS funding is a written request from the Chief of Police to identify the frontline need of the law enforcement agency and to hold a public hearing. Since 2001, the department has identified the need for a traffic officer to supplement its law enforcement services to the community, and we have dedicated the COPS funding to that position for the past 11 years. Tonight, I'm going to make the same request of you. Traffic enforcement and the related duties are crucial to providing law enforcement services to the community, and complaints related to traffic are frequently received at the police department. I'm sure you frequently receive complaints regarding traffic, and it's also evidenced they also reach the attention of the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee for police enforcement as one component of several traffic calming measures taken to address the community needs. Addressing traffic-related concerns enhances safety and improves the quality of life in our community. The department has only one officer dedicated solely for the purpose of traffic enforcement and collision investigation. The request for traffic enforcement far exceeds the amount of resources the department has, and the department can devote to neighborhood traffic complaints. Requests for neighborhood enforcement are passed to patrol officers to monitor as they are available and as calls allow. And as I'm sure you can imagine, our lone traffic officer is frequently tied up on major thoroughfares such as El Camino, Skyline, San Bruno Avenue, and Sneak Lane. The requests and recommendation before you tonight will allow COPS funding to continue to be devoted to maintain a traffic officer included in our current budget. The traffic officer position is critical to the department's ability to respond to traffic complaints, enforce traffic laws, and investigates collision, and investigate collisions. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of the chief? All right, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to speak to the council regarding this?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Make it real sweet. I would ask for a unanimous vote in support of the, the Chief of Police request.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I close the public hearing. You're precluded from discussing this with us any further.
Move to close the public hearing?
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, questions of the chief or action?
I, I don't think there should be any question on this. I believe, uh, we can probably say that there's been a unanimous vote, uh, since 1996, 1996, so I would like to adopt the resolution approving COPS again.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number nine is public comment, and the item is not on this agenda. It is the council's policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. Along with Kennebera and a number of San Bruno residents, we are working for Relay for Life San Bruno Octo, August, August, I don't know where, April 27th and 28th, 24 hours at Cappuccino High School. I just want to let the public know they can get information at www.relayforlife.org/sanbrunocalifornia. Join a team, donate some money, find a sponsor, come out and have fun on the 27th and 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll go right to item 10, conduct of business. Item A is received a quarterly financial update report as of December 31st, 2012, and adopt a resolution approving a mid-year amendment to the 2012-13 general fund, enterprise fund, internal service fund, and special revenue funds operating budget. Kim?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I am here tonight to present to you the quarterly financial update report as of December 31st, 2012, as well as a mid-year proposed budget amendment. Uh, the second quarter financial update, you will typically see, uh, as opposed to the first quarter financial update, you will see revenues starting to catch up as far as timing. Many of our revenues are still timing about a month behind, but you will see that we are starting to near that 50% point. So, excuse me, moving right into the revenues, I'd like to highlight what I think is positive news that I delivered with the first quarter financial update, uh, with, starting with sales tax. We are continuing to see an increase in sales tax. Can you see? I apologize, it's not very clear up there. Less than learned, next time I'll use white. So, sales tax, you might recall, we increased the budget for sales tax by $100,000 this year, and those, the revenues so far year-to-date are tracking slightly above budget, so we do anticipate that sales tax will not only meet budget, but will exceed the current budget of $6.7 million at the end of the year. Property tax, we are currently at 51%. Uh, this is typical, for this time of year, we get our first installment of property tax in December, so that is what's reflected here. What is not reflected in this property tax number is the additional property tax that the city now receives as a result of the elimination of redevelopment. That money comes at during, in a separate distribution. The first installment was received on January 2nd, and the next installment will be received June 1st. So, that, that number is not reflected here. However, based on information that we've received and the amount we've received, we do anticipate that property tax overall will exceed the budget at the end of the year as a result of this new money coming in from the loss of redevelopment. VLF is tracking on course as we anticipated. Charges for services, you will see that as comparison to last year, there is a significant decline, and the reason for that is, this is the account where we see the allocations that we used to recover from the redevelopment agency for general administration salaries and so forth. That was a revenue coming into the general fund. That is why the budget was dropped this year was lost, the redevelopment, and that's why that amount is less dollar-for-dollar last year. Another positive trend that we're seeing is continuing growth in the TOT, Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax. Uh, this amount only represents, that you see here, represents five months, not six months, because we do tend to track a month behind, so at this point in time, we are trending above budget, and we do anticipate that we will exceed the budget at year-end in that category. And just finishing up on the revenue side, business taxes doing strong as well. We typically see that those are front-loaded the first half of the year because that's when people renew their business license, so the amounts that we're seeing there in the 82% is typical. Uh, otherwise, uh, everything is tracking as, um, par with where we thought we'd see it, and overall total general fund revenues are at 49% as of December 31st. On the expenditure side, uh, you will see that we are tracking slightly above budget, and that is the result of a number of different things. Primarily, you might recall that when we adopted the current year budget, we included the continuation of the negotiated furlough and the, uh, due to the fact that we had the expiration of all six of our bargaining unit agreements on June 30th. Uh, we did not include the elimination of that furlough. We have since settled with four out of the six bargaining units. The furlough was eliminated, and therefore, we're seeing the actual expenditures reflecting the elimination of that furlough, but the budget is not yet reflecting that. In addition, we had, uh, PERS increases, which are primarily driven by safety PERS increases, so you will see slightly higher trends in the safety departments as a result of those PERS increases. We also have less vacant positions this year than we had last year, so, uh, when you compare dollar-wise prior year to this year, you will see that we are higher this year because we don't have the salary. We are tracking, uh, higher dollar-wise bec, due to the fact that we don't have the vacant positions and the salary savings that we had last year. And finally, as you, if you look specifically at a certain department like planning and building, you will see that, uh, the expenditures year-to-date are higher than they were last year, and again, the recurring theme, this is another impact as a resulting from the loss of redevelopment. Uh, last year at this point, redevelopment was still in existence. We were still able to allocate salaries of staff that were in the planning and building departments to redevelopment. That is no longer the case. We budgeted for that in the general fund, and that's why you see higher expenditures there. So, overall, bottom line, total, uh, general fund expenditures were at 52%. However, I will, uh, add that there's a proposed budget amendment to increase the budget to account for the elimination of the furlough along with some of the, um, benefit increases that were agreed to as part of the negotiated agreements. If that budget amendment is adopted, the total expenditures will be at 50% of budget, so they will be tracking just on where we thought they should be. Moving to the enterprise funds, uh, we see that the expenditure, the revenues in cable are tracking slightly below, but likewise so are the expenditures. So, in cable, we are still seeing that revenues are exceeding the expenditures. In wastewater and water, you are seeing the revenues tracking along with what we proposed, what we expected to see as part of the rate increase. These amounts do reflect about three months of the increased rate that went into effect in September. And I would remind you in looking at the expenditure side, it's a bit misleading because what this is showing you are operating costs. It does not include costs as part of the capital improvement program, and as you are aware, much of that rate increase is to cover costs of capital, so the excess revenue that this is showing is expected, and it, due to the fact that it's not including the capital on the expense side. And finally, on stormwater, nothing notable. It comes in with the property tax, and so we tend to see 50% at this time of year. So, moving into the proposed mid-year budget amendment, uh, on the revenue side, based on the information that we have at this point, the proposed budget amendment is to increase property tax as a result of the loss of redevelopment. The additional property tax that we believe we will receive this year is about $400,000. At this point in time, sales tax is trending above, and we anticipate that it will exceed the budget by $150,000. Likewise, transient occupancy tax, we are proposing to increase the budget $100,000 for a total increase in general fund revenues of $650,000. The next amendment is a, uh, to the one-time fund for the recoveries that we discussed at the last meeting. We were receiving money, one-time money resulting from the loss of redevelopment. This is the former balances of the redevelopment and low and moderate income housing funds that the city is receiving. We estimate about $457,000, uh, which has been earmarked for the archway construction, so this is a budget amendment for those revenues. And finally, uh, an increase in the self-insurance fund due to a increase in the premium for our liability coverage, uh, which I discussed, I believe, at the first quarter financial update report. That amount increased this year, the premium increased $151,000, and therefore, we want to increase the allocation into that fund to cover that, uh, additional expense. On the expenditure side, uh, most of these, uh, men, proposed amendments are a reflection of the negotiated agreements with the four bargaining units that have settled at this point. Uh, the total increase to reflect the elimination of the furlough, the increase in medical insurance costs, increase in management leave buyout that was offered to the mid-management and management bargaining units, as well as the professional development increase for management employees. For the general fund, total is about $652,000, and for all other funds, it, it's about In addition to those increases, uh, the budget amendment includes, uh, a budget, to establish a budget for the purchase of the hotel property as well as some of the professional services costs associated with that in the amount of 1.416 million. And as I earlier mentioned, on the revenue side, increase the transfers in, also increase the expense for the self-insurance for the premium increase of $151,000. And finally, the last item is the item for the cost for the construction of the archway of $604,000. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Your action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Bear Data Systems in the amount of $99,454.86 for the Technology Disaster Recovery Project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. As the mayor stated, this item requires your approval to execute a contract with Bear Data Solutions in the amount of $99,454.86 for the Technology Disaster Recovery Project. As stated in the staff report, we perform nightly tape backups to protect and archive the city's data. This process is being used in lieu of a long-term, or maybe a longer-term disaster recovery system to protect the entire city's technology infrastructure and our electronic or digital assets. These, these assets include, but are not limited to, our email records, our financial data, personnel records, utility and customer information, and our emergency response databases for San Bruno and Millbury Fire Departments. By enhancing or upgrading our existing virtual machine and storage technology or infrastructure, the project goal is to have a temporary data center, fully functional, uh, located in Police Plaza within four hours of a major outage in our City Hall data center. And, um, this will protect the assets mentioned earlier and also ensure that our city, city business, uh, processes can continue. We chose Police Plaza, um, as the best location because it is secure, it does have backup power supply sources, uh, it is, it is a new building, so it's seismically sound construction, and also, it is connected to our city's high-speed data network, and that network connects all city buildings. The project includes the installation, installation of two, uh, storage systems. They're identified as primary and secondary. The primary storage system is going to replace our existing five-year-old and end-of-life storage system located in San Bruno City Hall data center. Uh, all data and all servers are going to be migrated to this primary system. The secondary system, again, located in Police Plaza, will be a mirror image of this primary system. And using the included software, our data will be backed up to this system several times each day. Uh, we did, uh, evaluate other technologies, including cloud technology, uh, the use of a disk or a tape library, and also a hosted solution, but we chose the recommended storage solution because of the... But we chose the recommended storage solution because of the reasonable cost, the ease of administering the system, the ability to control access to the data and the equipment, the integration with the San Bruno Cable TV infrastructure, and also the low risk of service interruption in the event of a local or region-wide disaster. On December 17th, a request for proposals was made, and we sent the bid package to 13 vendors. And on January 11th, we received two proposals. One from Bear Data Solutions in the amount of $99,454.86, and Nexus in the amount of And after a comprehensive review, we did agree that Bear Data's proposal was the most responsive to the city's specifications and our needs. And Bear Data has installed similar storage systems for the Santa Clara County Office of Education and for the City of Cupertino. And currently, and for the past four years, they have provided support and maintenance to the San Bruno Cable digital phone infrastructure. On October 23rd, you approved the five-year capital improvement program budget, and in that budget was funding of $131,000 for this project. The total cost for the storage components, installation, and configuration, and this is per the Bear Data Solutions proposal, again, is $99,454.86. Additional components such as servers, various licensing firewall, and data switches, which is estimated at approximately $31,000, will be purchased using the remaining funds. And the majority of these components will be installed by San Bruno IT staff, so therefore, they're not a part of the contract with Bear Data. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Bear Data Solutions in the amount of $99,454.86. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Rico?
Oh, thank you. Eric, does this, the system that you proposed we install have an estimated lifespan?
About five years, I would say five to six years.
Okay, and then, do we have to replace the whole thing, or is it just upgrades that we have to do periodically, like every five years we have to do X?
Well, nowadays, you don't have to do a full, they call it a forklift upgrade. The components can be swapped out, they're more modular. So, the hope is that this will sustain us five years plus, but at the rate that technology changes and our needs may change, we'll have to see in about five years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? Any action by the council?
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, thank you for the report. This is something I think has been, we've talked about it, I'm glad it's getting implemented. You never know, we have to prepare, we have to be ready, and I think this is something that's long overdue. So, I'd go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And our final item under Conduct of Business, item C, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with American Asphalt Repair and Resurfacing Company for the street rehabilitation Slurry Seal project in the amount of $638,943, and a total construction budget of $804,943.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Staff first advertised the Slurry Seal project for construction bid last August, but the only bid received at the time was 60 percent over engineer's estimate. After the bid evaluation, staff confirmed that the bid price was actually over market price. The City Council subsequently rejected the bid on October 9th of last year. During the October 9th meeting, the City Council also asked staff if any of the street listed for Slurry Seal work had received payment treatment in the past. Staff reviewed the city's street resurfacing projects that are on file and found that 14 out of the listed 25 streets had received payment treatment in various year between 1993 and 2007. 13 out of the 14 streets were overlay-renewed asphalt, while the other one was Slurry Seal. Now, going back to this more exciting item in front of you tonight, staff re-advertised the Slurry Seal project again in just this past December. Because of the low response from, or the low response from the last bid process, staff established a longer bidding period this time and reached out to the contractor by telephone. This is additional to the traditional mailings and newspaper ads. Staff also sent contract documents to additional plan rooms and updated the city's Slurry Seal contractor directory after comparing with the ones from nearby cities. As a result, the city received six bids this time, with the lowest bidder is submitted by American Asphalt Repair and Resurfacing. Their bid is in an amount of $638,942.90. After review of their bids and reference check, staff confirmed that their bids is responsive and responsible. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council approve, awarding this contract. If approved, the construction will start as early as spring, and pending, of course, that pending weather conditions. Also, as the City Council might recall, there's a second project in the city's street rehab program for this year. The second project is for pavement overlay and reconstruction work. Staff is still on track of advertising this project this spring for summer construction. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions of staff? Kim?
Yes, you did, you mentioned, you know, the bid rejection back in August, and I'm just curious, I mean, and then you explained that you did a little more outreach. I mean, was that what it was? Or, I mean, I would think back in August that, you know, they would have, they would have, you know, responded better, but, I mean, because, I mean, the staff report just says that, you know, you received some comments, and so you, you know, you altered your, you know, your action, so I'm just curious as to, you know, what was the big change?
There's really no clear reason why the response from the last time was so low, but it could be from some of the contractor that bid this time around. The response was that they were quite busy, even though it was late summer last year. Now that we advertised ahead of everyone else, they were able to submit their bids and actually have time to spend on working on it.
Makes sense, thank you.
To the Chair.
Rico?
Thank you. I appreciate the list of the last treatment that was received. I'd asked about that prior, and so I appreciate that being provided. With that, there are some blanks. Is that because work on those streets are listed here or done prior to 1993, or is it that we just don't have the data?
We don't have the data, so it's either it was not done, obviously, it was not done after 1993, but we don't have data to confirm whether there were work done prior to 93.
Okay, and so, for example, if people were to ask, we see here on San Bruno Avenue West Side, we had an 07, an overlay. So, obviously, if you want to drive, as I did tonight, the east side of San Bruno Avenue, people may say, well, why isn't that one being addressed? So, we're having 07 to 213 and now, for example.
May I, so the east side, you mean the east side from Al Camino on?
You're correct.
Well, that one, staff had prepared PTAP 13 grant that the, we got an opportunity to get design opportunity there. In terms of when we can schedule for work, first of all, it's tied into also the gray separation project. We'd like to do that afterwards, and there's other commitment that I think we can bring out to the City Council Subcommittee that for discussion, when that we can, when we can implement the improvement on the east side of San Bruno Avenue.
Okay, thank you, just wanted that noted, just in case a question comes up. One thing that I will tell you is that I am happy and elated to see that here on Fourth Avenue, and I don't mean that with any cynicism, is that I have walked that, and it wasn't just when we talked about the arch that I walked it again, not even just drove it. And I know there will be one gentleman that we all have heard from, rightfully so, that will probably be happy, and I'm sure all the residents were. The thing is, obviously, that there are many folks that would feel rightfully so. Their area, their street has been neglected, overlooked, not on the list. What makes the priority? How does it get here? Where's the money? And how come? Not with a lot of explanation, but as brief as you can, to the point of anybody that's listening or that may want to gain that information, because it's questions I get, and how we derive this with the dollars that we have, opposed to all those folks who want to get petition drives on their street.
So, staff utilized city's payment management plan and online NTC software to generate a draft list of street that would be the most optimum use of front staff for maintenance or repair work. It is, we use that as a starting point and using incorporating community concern, so we actively keep a log, and we actively communicate with the street service manager. So, whether, you know, the call is coming from the central city hall or to the yard, we are aware of the situation. And to the resident on Fourth Avenue, we always have, we keep them in mind, and that, you know, they call me personally, I address to them and let them know what are our plans, and what are the reason if there's a potential, you know, little delay like what we had in August.
I was going to say thank you, but should I not yet?
And of course, this is all based on City Council's input as well.
Well, that was a good, that was a good conclusion, I like that. Thank you, thank you for that clarification and information for everybody.
Good. Anything else?
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to adopt this resolution for Pete.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 11, Report of Commissions, Boards, and Committees. No reports this evening. Item 12, Comments from Council Members. Anyone have anything?
To the Chair.
Okay.
I'm probably getting scolded for this, but I just want to give a little shout-out that there's a crab feed fundraiser at St. Roberts this Saturday. Anna Marie Jones is a great, great resident, and she's given a lot to this community. Her granddaughter has gone through a lot of health problems in this last year. She'll need a liver transplant, and she's had some heart problems, and the community has just really come out, friends and families, and for $30, you can get an all-you-can-eat crab dinner, and there'll be auctions, and it's a good way to spend some money and help this family out. So, 5 o'clock, 5:30 Saturday at St. Roberts, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we are going to go into closed session, and we have three items. Item A, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representative, city manager, human resources director, Jeff Rothman, negotiator Charles Sakai, and outside counsel, employee organizations, public safety mid-management bargaining unit, and San Bruno police bargaining unit. Item 13B, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A1 Case. Name of case, AT&amp;T versus City of San Bruno, San Mateo County Superior Court Case 518268. And item 13C, Liability Claim Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95. Claimant, AT&amp;T, agency claimed against City of San Bruno. Item number four is adjournment. Prior to adjournment, I would like to mention a few people that I'd like to close this meeting in memory of. First of all is Jim Kelly. Jim Kelly was very, very active in this city and a very active participant in our City Council meetings. He was 93 years old, believe it or not, and he died unexpectedly in visiting his sisters up in Oregon, and he was one of the founders of St. Roberts Church, so it'd be sorely missed, he was a good friend. And also, I'd like to adjourn this evening in memory of two law enforcement officers who recently lost their lives in Southern California and some associated family members due to the, this renegade police situation that's going on down there. So, if you could join me in a moment of silence, I would appreciate it. Thank you, and this meeting will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting, will be held right here, February 26, 2012, at the Senior Center. Meeting adjourned.